Call to order. The city commission meeting for Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. Let the record show that we're missing one commissioner, Commissioner Frederick. First item up is the order of business, Mr. Winningham. Are there any changes to the order of business?
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Commissioners, there are no change to the agenda or order of business.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions for Mr. Winningham on the order of business? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion on the order of business. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments? All in favor of the order of business as presented, state aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the commissioners wish to amend or discuss? There are no questions. I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move right into administration and finance. First item up is our city hall construction bid. This will be handled by City Administrator Winningham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, before you, in your packet, you'll see two separate Excel spreadsheets. There's an additional one that's dated today's date. It's a final tabulation of the bids that were received on May 26th of 2021 at 2:00 p.m. This is the bid for the city hall remodel. There was two prime bids received. Both of those bids were higher than the general mechanical and electrical bids. And according to the Title 48 of our North Dakota Sentry Code, then we defer to the general mechanical and electrical bids for our review. In the very first, that was considered the single prime bids. Those are the two that's on page one of your Excel spreadsheet. It's tabbed "single prime." I'll move now to the general tab. Under the general tab, with complete tabulation, you'll see that the bid under Roars Incorporated was the lowest overall bidder. That includes all of the mechanical and electrical bids. That total number was $1,168,129, which is lower than both of the first prime bids. Therefore, according to the Sentry Code, we then defer to the lowest bidder. If you move to the next tab, that's the mechanical bid. That was also lowest bid, Central Mechanical Incorporated. Followed by the final tab, which is Burger Electric, as our electrical bid at $197,007.9. There was a couple of alternates that the commission could have chosen. It was labeled from the prime bid as G1 through G10. We discounted or removed the alternate for G5, which was essentially an LED light upgrade that is not currently the requirement for the city. We could go back and look at that later, at a later date, but in order for time and efficiency and the best interest of the city, we took out the alternate for G5. We then tabulated all of the bids that we received, and we still came up with the lowest bidder as Roars Construction as the general contract. Also, under the Sentry Code, we can designate Roars as the coordinator for this general contract, which then he would coordinate, that company would coordinate with the mechanical electrical for coordination of timelines and coordination of scheduling for the building. However, what the city staff is recommending, what I'm recommending, is that we place our public works director, Gary Zeroff, as the overall project manager. In a sense, the owner's representative, that's what would be designated on the contract, and he will shepherd the project from start to finish as the city's owner rep. In the original bids, the timeline was laid out for completion of the project. That was substantial completion of the interior work by September 15th, 2021, followed by the substantial work for the exterior to be completed by 1 October, 2021. And we see no change for that. The next step would be for the commission to vote to award a contract.
Commissioners, are there any questions before I ask for a motion on the awarding of the contract? Are there any items that, within this, that you wish to discuss?
Mr. Winningham, at this point, why were the decisions made to go without those couple alternates that we had chosen not to go forward on?
There was two primary reasons. The G5 alternate was bid for the LED lights, which would essentially, two things, slow down our ability to move into the building once the interior is completed. So that work is not substantial enough that we would have to retrofit the building completely with electrical because it's just lighting. At $68,000 for the lowest bid, it wasn't, in my mind, enough to slow us down or to add that to the cost of the city right now, considering that we have working lights in the building at this point. So speed was one of the primary concerns. Additionally, during the bid process, there was what I would consider by the Sentry Code, an irregularity within the bid, which, in order to take the argument out of that irregularity, we would just consider throwing out that irregularity. And that was essentially, the form as it was presented as a bid wasn't completed correctly. And in discussions with GT Architecture, who opened the public hearing with city attorney and reviewing the documents, the best way forward is just to discount the entire G5 alternate. The city has the ability to take all the alternates out if the commission wishes, and we can just go with base bids. If we did that, it would still be determined as the lowest bidder of Roars Construction.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
If, all the alternates, as we're going along here, are those things that we decide as we move through, or do we approve all the, you know, do we need to decide today as a commission which alternates we think are important or not, or is that something that we decide throughout the process?
At today's offering, or today's final tally of the bid, we're recommending G1 through four and G6. That is the work for the interior ground floor, a few minor additions upstairs, which is a wall rule. If you look at tab "general" on the Excel spreadsheet, it'll show you what the brief summary of what G1 is, which is adding windows to the top floor, and then you could just read through there. And then we added G6, which is essentially matching the countertops within the building as they are now. They are currently quartz. So we didn't want to take that one out.
And that's only in certain areas, and that needs to be added if there's already in many areas, or if you're saying it's matching?
It's matching within the scope of the casework of what Room 103 is. To save money at any time, we could take any of these alternates and stop them during this process. It would be part of, once we award the contract, we could take some of those alternates out. But it could disrupt the time flow. So these are the, essentially, the minimal inputs that were required, and there's been several meetings with GT Architecture, both at the building and on paper, to essentially meet that timeline by making the minimum amount of invasive structure possible. And that's what this, that's what this bid with those G1 through four and six give us at this point.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Oderman.
I'd move to approve city staff's recommendation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Oderman to approve city's recommendation of awarding the contract to Roars Construction.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion or questions?
President Decker, excuse me, since it's a three-prime, we probably recommend awarding to Roars Burger and Central.
Okay. So this will be the, the first motion will be for awarding Roars. Second would be for Burg, um...
Central.
Central.
Oh, Central.
And then third would be Burger.
Right.
I'd amend my motion to reflect that if necessary.
Okay. So the... This first motion will be awarding Roars with their general. Am I correct?
Correct. General construction?
General construction. And that is by Commissioner Oderman, seconded by Commissioner Sobeluk. You still second Commissioner Sobeluk?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Second award, pull this up.
Would be for Central Mechanical?
For Central Mechanical, for the mechanical construction.
I'd move to approve the bid from Central Mechanical Incorporated for our mechanical construction on our new city hall.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve Central Mechanical.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. The next bid award would be to Burger Electric.
I'd move to approve Burger Electric as the electrical construction contractor for the city of Dickinson City Hall renovation.
We have a motion to approve Burger Electric for the electrical construction at new city hall by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving on, we have police department restructuring, and that'll be presented by City Administrator Winningham.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioner. I just want to go back one moment to the agenda item for generally what we've talked about in a city meeting before for bids. So there is a process under the Sentry Code that we have talked about. Commissioner Oderman had made a comment previously. And essentially, when we do make these considerations for construction, for public improvement, infrastructure, we do follow the Sentry Code. And one of the ways we can do that is we can designate a committee when we want to look at construction management or construction management manager at risk procedures. This, the city hall bids were hard bids, and in reviewing all of the details back over the last 18 months, we did not designate a committee or move forward with nominating or going through the process of looking for a construction manager or designated a construction manager at risk. So therefore, these were considered hard bids. In the future, I think one of the things the commission can do and city staff will work towards is if there are larger projects that the city feels like will become out of control for budgetary reasons, or their projects are so large. Typically, cities do these construction managers at risk or construction managers when they're going to be complex and the design needs to be followed very closely. So this project wasn't one of those after review. And we'll also have the town square that's also under what would be considered hard bid. Going back through all the data, we also did not designate a committee that would essentially put that as a construction manager or construction manager at risk. I just wanted to bring that forward because there's been some communications back and forth that I'm sure the public had reviewed, and statements that I have made about construction manager at risk and construction management, I think is a good practice for cities to do. I also think that if we feel like we can't handle the complexity, then those are always good options. But it is a formal process, and we'd have to start that earlier than we have. But I think we're on good ground now to continue with these two projects, and I think they'll still be, we'll still be able to control costs and manage the projects appropriately for the public funds.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. We'll proceed then into the police department restructuring.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. What's before you is, we've had public comments and work session comments within our city staff, within the chief of police. He can't be here this evening, and so I'm presenting what we had previously discussed about reorganization within the Dickinson Police Department management structure, which is to add the two lieutenant positions within that structure and move forward with a budget amendment for 2021. That would essentially, if you look at the data that's on this screen now, would be very minimal impact to the budget, but it would put our management for our police department in the best interest of the city. And if you look at what's currently happening throughout the country and in other municipalities, the city of Dickinson's been very progressive at keeping our structure within our police department that best supports both not only our crime rate, but also the citizens of Dickinson. And this would also, once we put those lieutenants in place, give that strategic look for our department. It would also facilitate better decision-making for our officers that have to face what they face day-to-day on the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Are there any questions from Mr. Winningham on the organization chart or the leadership chart for the police department? In the memo, if, Commissioners, if you take note, there's, to this budget, there's a $28,000 impact to this year's budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Oderman.
I'd move to approve the restructuring of the police department leadership or administration. How are we going to say that?
I think we're, yes, is the Dickinson PD Command Structure Draft, yeah, 2020. Have a motion to approve the command structure for the Dickinson Police Department. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up, we have a reclassification of an executive administrative position, and that'll be handled by City Administrator Winningham.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. What is before you additionally this evening is a change within one of our administrative assistants within the city. It also happens to be within the police department. Over the last several years, tasks have been changed within that department, within that job description structure. So it has evolved to meet the needs of the, not only the police department in general, but also with the chief of police. So there has been added complexity. There is, if you look at what was provided in your packet, there's multiple additions to what was previously considered tasks that were administrative assistants. This position now has been upgraded to where they have independent decision-making, but also coordination throughout the city staff and also within the police department proper. And so the request is to change this job description to executive assistant to the chief of police. That would require a grade plate change. This is the requirement for that position for the city's future. It does impact a current employee that would then continue to do the same work that they're doing now, but only with a corrected task and job description. And it would impact the budget for 2021 of approximately $1,100. What that will then provide for the city is in the future, when that person does retire, the city will be able to hire at the appropriate grade plate. It changes it to a, from an 11 to 13. And as I mentioned in previous meetings, that I would come from time to time to the commission to talk about adjusting some of the city's requirements, and would have to come before you to do these grade changes.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions on this reclassification?
Mr. President, I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions for Mr. Winningham? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Last item in administration is a report. Mr. Winningham?
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. This report, I just want to bring before the commission, this would be the second iteration of an extension of a liquor license, although authorized by the municipal code for the city administrator to approve those extensions, I wanted to bring it to the commission's light just as a report. The Grand Dakota Lodge was recently sold, and in order to keep the business afloat, keep things moving, there was a request made for a 30-day extension. We granted that. That was last month, so now we're in a second request to grant another 30 days. And so I was inclined to grant that request, but I wanted to put that before the commission just as a report.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions on the extension for Grand Dakota? Not, we'll move into public safety, and we have fire department monthly report. Chief Presnell.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioner. Before you tonight present the May monthly report for the fire department, I just wanted to briefly go over the services we provide, fire suppression, EMS response, hazardous material at the operations level, public education, fire prevention, inspections, and then we're a regional response team for structural collapse, high and low angle rescue, and an operational team for the state. These numbers here were from 5/26, so they have increased for the end of May. We actually are at 70 calls for the month of May, but it is a significant increase from 2020, approximately 39%. Here's a breakdown of each of the call types. We did have two structure fires and three vehicle fires for the month of May, and we did see a significant increase in some of the false alarms or good intent calls for the burn ban and people having backyard fires. So we did get a lot of responses there. Calls by station against, the south station is the primary number of calls that we run, but we do get a few up north, but the majority of them do happen south of the freeway. Then our response times, we did see about a 10-second decrease in our response times from station one, so we're improving there, but we were getting a little, little worse from the station two response. And a lot of that had to do with how far out the calls were or in the middle of neighborhoods, so we had to slow down a little bit. But we did see a little over a minute increase to our response times north, to the north side of town. Training hours, we had approximately 238 hours for the month of May, and this puts us about a little over halfway of our required 6,264 hours that we have for ISO for the entire department. So some of our successes for the month of May, we did complete our firefighter one academy. It was a huge success. I did find out earlier today that we already have 21 high school students signed up for next year, and they're going to spread that academy over a whole year instead of over one semester. So we're hoping that that'll be a lot easier on the kids. Touch a Truck was a huge success. We did have a lot of contact with the community. We participated in the Make-A-Wish, and then we also certified 11 new fire instructors that kind of helped take on some of this additional load we have with the Fire Academy and some other training areas. Some of the challenges we saw, we obviously are seeing an increased call volume. We're seeing an increase in our response times, specifically north of town. We are seeing a decrease in number in our volunteers, and we just got hit this week with three firefighters out on our full-time. We have one out on paternity leave, one with a broken wrist, and the other out with an illness. And then our, another challenge that we're seeing is a felling radio system. We're still waiting on the Siren 2020 project to get completed. It's just not there yet. They're kind of pushing it back with COVID and several other factors. That implementation date hasn't been pushed back. Every time we get wind, which never happens in Dickinson, our radios pretty much become unusable. So we're dealing with that. We're switching over to different channels when we can, and I, it's just, the entire system is about ready to fail. And with that, I will gladly answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Chief Presnell?
We've probably talked about this before, but so the radio system, once the Siren 2020 kicks in, then you will have a brand-new radio system, and that will be, or do we need to be looking at other options for that radio system?
That's correct. When they do get the Siren 2020 project implemented, our radio systems for all intent and purpose should be fixed. But for right now, we are looking at some redundancies, some other options that we can use right now and that we can have in place even when Siren does go into effect.
Thank you.
So chief, who's pushing it back? Is it the state? Is it the manufacturer?
I think it's a combination of all of it. I think there were some local issues with the county. The state with COVID kind of got slowed down, and then just manufacturing and supply has been an issue.
So they've started some distribution to other parts of the state, or is it?
Yeah, I believe Grand Forks is up and running. Williston's about ready to be up and running, and I think we're fourth or fifth. But we did hear last week that we should be up and running towards the end of the summer, early fall.
And they have, like, contact teams come out and set you guys up and train you on the new radios, or?
Yes.
Okay. So our radios, is it a tower issue?
I'm not 100% sure what it is. We're getting some interference. They can't figure out and pinpoint exactly what's causing the interference, but every time we get wind or weather, I mean, our radios become inoperable.
And I don't know if you know the answer, but has the police department experienced same problems?
I believe they are experiencing some of the problems, and I don't know if they're exactly what we're dealing with, but yeah.
Are there any other questions for Chief Presnell? All right. Thank you. 5 o'clock, and we have a distinguished guest this evening. Senator Wardner is going to do a presentation for us on the 67th legislative session. So that's like your 66th, right, session?
My 66th?
My 66th? It's been a few, but yeah, this was the 67th session, and I, Mr. President and members of the Dickinson City Commission, I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you about some of the things that I feel are really important to our community, that are happening at the state level, and some of them were, didn't happen this biennium, but there were ramifications. Just a comment on Siren, there was a lot of pushback in the southwest on Siren, and that is part of it, but I think the virus had a lot to do with holding it up. I, I was attending the meetings and things were going along pretty well, and then, of course, the coronavirus hit us, and as a result, things really slowed up, so I would be one that will be double-checking and pushing to make sure that we get these radios that work in the hands of our emergency people, because I believe lives are at stake if we don't get it done. I need to get going because I, I know you've got to, oops, questions went the wrong way. See, I may need help with the, oh, okay, I went too far.
I think she's starting it over for you.
Oh, okay. There we go. The, the arrow that goes, okay. Oops.
Dez is going to come out and give you the Cliff Notes version, real quick.
So similarly mounted, just goes back, and this is the laser.
Okay. Okay, the first one I brought up, could we dim the lights so that everybody can see? First one I brought up was the North Dakota oil tax distribution because it impacts this community big time. The issue was settled in the 19 session. However, I would like to point out that we did not have to worry about it this past session, because in the Prairie Dog legislation, we made sure that there was a sunset on it. And I want you to know, it was a relief in the session not to have to worry about somebody trying to take away oil money from the western oil counties and including the hub cities. There are two taxes. There's the gross production tax, which is about 5%, which is 5%, and extraction tax, which is 5%, and the dollars generated. And you might look at that and say, well, how come gross production tax is more? They're both 5%, because we have a thing called the, the wells that do not produce very much oil, and you, so there is no extraction tax on it. So we do collect gross production tax on some of the oil wells out there because they are low producers, whereas there is no extraction tax at all collected on them. And remember, the numbers that I'm using are two-year numbers. Okay, where does it go? First of all, I'm going to just quickly go over the extraction tax. Why is it important that you know where to go? Because a lot of people think that the state is just rolling in the money, and it all goes to the general fund. It does not go to the general fund. First of all, the legacy fund gets 30%. That's a constitutional thing voted in by the people of North Dakota. The Resources Trust Fund gets 20.5%, and you can see the dollar amount, and these are pretty close to what they're going to end up being for this biennium. 389.5 million goes to that. When you look at the Resources Trust Fund, which is water, it's the water, southwest water, we benefit from that big time. Keep in mind that the school, two school ones I'm going to talk about and the Resources Trust Fund, that goes all the way back to 1980 in Measure 6, and it was voted in by the people of North Dakota, and because right after that, we had a bust, then all of a sudden, things changed, but we still maintain that 20.5% goes to water, and the other 20% is split between the Common Schools Trust and the Foundation Aid Stabilization Fund gets the other 10%. But those are school funds. Those are supporting schools. Just a comment on the Common Schools Trust Fund, because it has kicked in, and by the way, it has become a very large fund, it's $5 billion, and we can only use the revenue from it to support schools. Because the revenue came in this past biennium, or for the next biennium, will be $434 million. $434 million are generated from this fund, we were able to decrease the general fund to K through 12 education by 63 million. It is starting to make a difference. It makes a difference in supporting our public schools. You can see that the Foundation Aid Stabilization Fund, that is there, that no matter what happens, schools will never be cut. Public schools will never get cut because that money, there's money laying in reserve. Now, it generates more than what is needed in reserve to take care of a shortfall, and that then is used in K through 12 education. And then there's oil and gas research bucket, which only has, the $10 million goes into that. There's a lot of other research that get, oil and gas research that gets money different places. The rest goes to the famous state buckets. I will not go over the buckets with you tonight, it would take too long, but you hear about the buckets, and that's where the Prairie Dog buckets are, and they're at the end, and they didn't, they're not filling this time. This is the one I really want you to focus in on. I want you to make sure that you, see, there's, there's two streams. Number one, the 20% of the $2 billion or $200,000 million of that goes to the state buckets, which is 400 million. We call that the 1% stream because it's 1 and 4. Well, that's 20 and 80%. Here's the one that is, we as a hub city need to be concerned about, and that is the 80% of the 200 million goes through a formula, and political subs in oil counties receive in lieu of property tax. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to tell you, we believe and know that that is the right thing to do. We are impacted. We cannot tax the oil. The state taxes it. This is in lieu of. The thing that you need to understand is that there are legislators and people in other parts of the state that don't understand in lieu of property taxes, because we are impacted by that industry. So 80% of the $2,000 million or $2 billion is 1.6 billion or 1,600 million. The political subs will receive approximately 620 million of that. We don't get it all. And it took us years to finally get a formula that takes care of us, and we don't want to lose it. What happens is that all of the counties get the first $5 million each year from that 80% of this gross production tax. After that, it is split, 30% to the political subs, 70% to the state. 30, 70. We worked hard to get it to 40, 60. Could never get it done. Too much pushback. Problem, and, and so we've decided that along with the, for those of you that may not remember, we had the surge back in 15, surge money, a billion dollars came to western North Dakota so that we could take care of our roads. It was just like a war zone out here, and we got it, we got it done. So because we got the, the surge money, we're okay with this, and we want to maintain it. But what I want to do is get to the hub city part here in just a second. So the state of North Dakota still receives it 980 million, but then they still take 30%. They take 30% of the $2 billion out of the 980 for legacy. So the legacy gets a lot of money over the course of a biennium. Here's the part that I want to stress on you. The political sub-distribution is really put into three areas. There are counties that get less than $5 million a year, that is per year. There are counties that get more than $5 million a year. And then there's the hub cities and the hub city schools. Those are the three areas that we put it in. The hub city and the hub city schools used to be, before the 19 session, was over in that 1% stream, that 20%, and it drove legislators nuts. They said, that's our money. You got too much. I can't tell you how many times I've heard that, and you don't want to take this money for granted. We got it moved in the 19 session out of the 20% over to the 80%, and it's crickets. Nobody's questioning it. And we made sure, and I want you to look under the, where it says hub cities and hub city schools, hub cities get 44 million. That is guaranteed money. No percentage, guaranteed. And I'll show you what Dickinson, Dickinson gets 6.2 million out of it. Who are the hub cities? Minot, Williston, and Dickinson. And your mayor was there when we negotiated, and we worked on the formula, and we got it done. Now, the rest of it over here, the hub cities are not done. Hub cities are over in the counties, $5 million or more. You see, they get 9%. They, the hub cities get 9%. So you're guaranteed there's a floor. You cannot go below 6.2 million, but you can go higher. So we really do have a good deal, I believe, and we want to keep this. And because we have a, took the sunset off, and this isn't renegotiated every year, this is huge for our community. By the way, over there are counties at less than $5 million. Stark County's going to drop into that. Stark County has been over on this other side here where it says counties, $5 million and more. We're not, we're, we're going to end up being over on the other side. You can see that it's distributed, counties 45, cities 20, schools 35. Over here, it's a whole lot, it's quite a bit different. I want you to know, the individual is a guy by the name of Representative Bob Scarpell, who's no longer in the legislature. It's his idea of the hub cities. He lives in Tioga, and he was tired of Tioga getting peanuts. Williston was taking it all, and their sister city, Crosby, got a nice, big oil check all the time because Crosby is the largest city in Divide County. So I'm always thankful for him. It's his idea, and it's been really important to our community. Well, what does it, what does it mean? Here, here it is. It's going to be really close to this. There are the percentages, and they will fluctuate at the end of each biennium. They will kind of reset them, they'll take a look at the employment numbers in our region, and some of the other things that go along with the oil. But if they're going to stay pretty, pretty steady, Dickinson, 28.3%, 26.1 million. If we were on forecast, we were going to get over 27 million. The thing that I want to make sure that I hope I understand, and I, and that is, and when we do the property taxes on our community, it's around $6 million a year. Could you imagine if we lost this? You got $6 million plus another 12. We're blessed. And I want you to know that don't take it for granted. We need to get our, our debt paid and make sure that this will extend past that time. We should be able to take care of the citizens of this community with low property taxes as far as the, the city is concerned. So I, I'm excited about keeping this. However, keep in mind, keep in mind, that doesn't mean that some legislator from the east isn't going to dig around and say, you know what? Prairie Dog isn't delivering to us. Look at what Dickinson, Williston, and Minot are getting. That's not fair. And if you think that that's idle talk, it's not. I'll tell you, Mandan, they were sure they should have as much as we do. They don't. They are, they're in the Prairie Dog formula. I will quickly go over this. This is just a, a slide that I put in. State general fund spending. Where does it go? Well, I'll tell you where it goes. Health and Human Services, 33.9%. By the way, Health and Human Services has about 13 budgets within one budget. Everybody says that is way too much. And by the way, this isn't the total, this isn't our total budget. This does not include federal dollars or special dollars. This includes only tax dollars from the state of North Dakota. 33.9% goes to Health and Human Services, 33.2 goes to K through 12, and if you wonder why it's so much, because the state of North Dakota took 115 mils off the books. People will say, I don't, I don't remember that. They did. We did. 2013. We took 115 mils, took it over, the state pays for it. We dropped from 185 down to 70 mils. And most schools are not, well, they're scratching to get to 60, but they do have some other mils they can put on for special things, but there is no question. So of that, 1.2, you see, that's 1.6 billion. 1.2 is there because we took over property tax of 115 mils from the state. That's when the money was rolling in, and we've hung on to it. We have not let it go. And so when people say, why, why? Why are you talking about being short dollars? Well, we're, we're doing everything we can to keep our commitment to the property taxpayers of the state of North Dakota. Higher Ed is 14.1, corrections 14.4. I want to just point out, that's 85.6% of the state general fund budget. What's left is not much. So when they, people tell us that we're growing state government, we're really not. In fact, our, our budget was a very, a 3.1% increase this particular biennium. I'm not going into that. Okay, here are some of the pieces of legislation that will affect all of us. First of all, we had the bonding bill. We bonded 680 million. That was the total. I don't have it on there. It's 680 million. I, I thought we could have done more. The reason I thought we should have done more, the bonding cost is 2%, inflation is 3%. We do have other projects out there that are going to be done, that are in the queue. We're going to do them in the future. It may take six, seven, eight years before we get there, but by bonding, we're going to save money overall, and that 510 million state water projects, yes, Fargo diversion is the big one. And I have people tell me, oh, why are we doing, sending all this money to Fargo's diversion? Well, it wasn't something I was excited about to start with, but I'm going to tell you, the horse is out of the barn on that, folks. They're going to do it. And the longer we drag our feet, and the longer we wait to get it done, the more it's going to cost the state. There's 70 million for roads and bridges. That can help us in Stark County. The state DOT will take that and try to get a match from the federal government. Then we've got 50 million Low Interest Revolving Loan Fund. This is added to an existing loan fund that has 175 million in it that is already being used. This will add to it, and we keep growing that little bit at a time, and it's basically for cities, and it's two- And it's 2% or less, whatever the going rate is at the time. And the last one is a 50 million ag development center at NDSU. You might say, "Well, what's that for us?" Well, it's for the ag community. It has the meat lab, the commodities lab. It's got the Northern Crops Institute and the trade office there. That is for every farmer, rancher in North Dakota because that's where the trade groups come. And that's where we trade our commodities from. It'll be a big deal when that thing is finished. Right now, they have a museum where they bring these trade groups from all over the world, and everybody kind of chuckles because they do a great job with not much. It's called Harris Hall, and there isn't much there. All right, the legacy fund state investment. This is the second one that deals with the legacy fund. 10% of the principal dedicated to equity investments. We are now allowing the legacy fund to be invested, the principal in North Dakota. It will have a fund manager just like any other fund out there. And people have said, "You know, why not invest in North Dakota?" They have to go, and they have to meet the criteria. It doesn't, it'll still produce the revenue, but they've got to, they have a chance of companies and entities in North Dakota that can borrow money from that. It's 10%, up to 10%. And by the way, if there isn't anybody that qualifies, fine, the money goes and is invested someplace else. And then you've got 10% of the principles dedicated to fixed income investments. See that Legacy Infrastructure Loan Fund? That goes along with that other one I talked about that had $175 million, and we were adding 50 to it. There is going to be money available to our cities, low interest in the future if we need it. And then the other one is the BND Match Program. It's for economic development. I'll move on here. Okay, the next one is the streams. Okay, a big debate is going on. What are you going to do with the earnings from the legacy fund? What are you going to do with them? It's time we start doing something with them. And there's been a lot of debate. We couldn't do anything in the 19, we needed it, we needed that money for 19, '20 biennium, and we, 19 and '21, and we had to use them the biennium before. We had to use these legacy earnings in order to balance the budget. You might say, "Why?" Don't forget that big commitment to property taxes and schools. Well, now, we are coming out of it, and we're sitting pretty good. You can see that we've got bond payments in there, the PERS system, and I would like to make sure that we mention the PERS. The state of North Dakota, there are legislators that want the state of North Dakota to take the PERS retirement fund and change it from a defined benefit to a defined contribution. My concern is, what about the political subs? The counties, cities, and I'm not sure if all, how many cities are on, and school districts, support staff are all in the PERS retirement program. We don't want to leave them high and dry. Right now, the PERS is, has an unfunded liability of about, I think it's about 69% funded. And part of it's the legislature's fault, and it's their fault because we should have increased the contribution at the state level and didn't. Now, that's another argument that we had there. Right now, the political subs are keeping the PERS program going. You are the ones that are keeping us solvent, so to speak. But if we change from a defined benefit to a defined contribution, there's going to have to be money put into the fund to keep it whole. That's the defined benefit part. Defined contribution doesn't matter. They're gone. They're free. That's like a 401K. So, I just want you to have that on your radar. Clean, sustainable energy, a lot of discussion about that in this past legislative session. The North Dakota is investing in carbon capture and sequestration. We want to keep our coal plants. We want to make sure that we keep our fossil fields going here. It's critical to the state of North Dakota. Highway Trust Fund. I've got a slide that I'm going to show you what that means to us. $60 million. That $60 million is in place of a 3-cent increase in the fuel tax. There were many that wanted to increase the fuel 3 cents. I'm saying, "No." I'm saying, "Let's keep increasing this Highway Trust Fund money out of the legacy earnings." There's research and innovation. There's tax relief. We don't know if that's going to be income tax, property tax. It's there. And then there's unallocated dollars, $293 million. That gives you an idea of what we estimate for the next biennium as far as the legacy Here's the Highway Trust Fund. You see, the city gets 12.5%. That's 12.5% of the 23-cent fuel tax. This would be included in it. State gets money, county gets money, townships, and public transportation. I want to just mention federal dollars. We've got federal dollars. By the way, I got a call this afternoon when I was out planting the garden from the state treasurer, and he told me that the state of North Dakota got their $1 billion. It's in the bank. We have $1 billion that we have not appropriated. Whether we have to appropriate it in a special session, or whether we've got time before we have to spend it, we still need to take a look at that. But I would just like to point out here that that $1.01 billion is in the bank, but the money for the metro cities, they get 41.2. I call this the Prairie Dog money. It's from the federal government. It took care of the money that we didn't get, that filled in the buckets, didn't fill in the buckets for those other communities, counties, townships in the eastern part of the state. Bismarck gets $10.13 million. Fargo gets $19.67 million. Grand Forks, $11.4. They're the three metro communities in the state. Other North Dakota cities, $50.2 million. Dickinson, our share will be $3.43 million. We are part of this distribution. North Dakota counties get $147.8 million. Stark County will get $6.16 million. Unless they change their mind, but they've been pretty much right on. I'm talking about the federal government. Here are some other things that I would like to say that come out of this last session, the career and tech centers. We have $70 million into developing more career and tech centers in North Dakota for secondary education. A school making up to, making up a center can access up to $10 million with a one-to-one match. As you know, we're working on it here in our community. We're not only working for our public schools, we want our private schools, and we're also looking at Dickinson State University being a part of it. And of course, you all know the Halliburton facility out there. And there is a committee that has been working for over a year. We met again this morning, talking about some of the issues, and I believe it's going to revitalize education. I think it's going to make a difference in our community. I think we're going to have people here that are a workforce that's ready to go. And because we have a workforce that's skilled and trained, companies are going to want to Pulver Hall, I just want to mention that. There's $4 million we appropriated for the completion of Pulver Hall. Finish that up. That's going to be the Theodore Roosevelt Center. And you know, Mayor, you remember, we went down, remember, we were fighting for, "Keep that library and facility here." We lost the fight. But we may end up with something almost the same or better when it's all said and done. But anyway, this is going to be the Theodore Roosevelt Center. Plus, there's money for a meat lab at the ag department at DSU. They're going to get that going again. There's a demand for people in that, in meat processing. And also, there's softball field seed money to move that project, to help get that going, which I think is going to also be another big asset to our community. Behavioral health, I want to make sure that we mention that. It's an issue in our community. We call it Substance Use Disorder vouchers, SUD vouchers. We increased the money. We've got $15 million for these vouchers, doubling last bienniums, $8 million, and adding $2 million to expand to underserved areas. We would be one that would qualify. And I want you to know, behind the scenes, we are trying to get a provider here to help with some of our issues with behavioral health and addiction. Last year, we had eight, or last biennium, we had $8 million there for the SUD vouchers. And we had some of the Chair House in Fargo, St. John's, and Summit, they used it all up in a year. It didn't get done what we wanted. We want the vouchers out there for people to use, out in communities where they don't, so they don't have to travel for a provider. They can use it on a provider in their community. And we do have those providers here. And the other one is Free Through Recovery, $11.3 million. $8 million general fund, 3.3 federal funds to assist individuals and keep them from returning to prison. I happen to be in on some of that because my wife does Free Through Recovery. Let me tell you, it's hard work keeping these people out of prison. It seems like they would rather live in squalor. They would rather go back to prison and live, it just takes a long time to change their habits. And so, that, when you think of what it costs us to house a prisoner, which is around $44,000 a year, you start to see in time, this is making a difference in keeping costs down. And by the way, if we don't, we will have to build more prison facilities, and we haven't had to do that. All right, any questions? I probably went a little longer than I should have. Sorry, Mr. President, but--
You were right on time.
Those are things that, especially the hub city stuff, I really think, when I put it in perspective, I did not realize that our regular income or property tax collections were around $6 million. And this actually doubles that per year. So, I can't imagine what our property taxes and what kind of a job you people would have if we didn't have that hub city money.
So, are there any questions for Senator Wardner? And you don't need to apologize for going over. Take all the time you want. I mean, it's important information for all of us, so.
Well, I hope that I gave you something that will help you going forward.
It was a different session this year, so we didn't get to get down there and help you guys fight as much as we'd like. So, hopefully, next two years, we'll be able to help out a little bit more. And it was a different session for you guys, too, so.
It was. It was a very challenging session. You had the COVID. You had new technology. It was just different. And then we had ethics rules, so we didn't go out and visit and socialize with the rest of the legislature. We were kind of isolated. But you know what? When it was all said and done, those three legacy things, I call them the trifecta, we're off and running. They're a work in progress. They're a work in progress. They're not finished. And they're going to serve this state very well. That's all.
All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. We will jump back into our regular agenda and move over to, well, right or left. Okay. We have the bid approval for the sidewalk program.
And don't we have a timetable agenda item at 5:30?
Oh, yes, we do. Yes, we do. I was looking too far down. We had a 5:45 I was looking at. I skipped over the 5:30. So, yes, a task order for Houston Engineering. They're probably ready to get out of here, so they're listening to. So, Public Works Director Zurov. This is your task order, and it's a public hearing, so.
Yes, thank you, President Dekker and Commissioner. I did want to, I guess, thank Senator Wardner and all the work he's done to bring dollars to this community and help us develop all the infrastructure that we have built in the last four or five years. Before Houston Engineering does their presentation, I'd like to just go through a brief history and timeline of the landfill challenges and alternatives that we've gone through over the last four or five years. First of all, our current landfill site was deeded over to the city in 1990. And it was originally the Husky Industries, then the Royal Oak Charcoal briquet company is the site that we're at now. That's when they terminated production and needed the land to us. Before we started landfilling, they did install a 15-foot compacted clay liner. At that time, met the requirements for us to start landfilling. 2014, 2015, with the current volumes coming in, the life expectancy of the landfill was looked at to be about 20 years, which isn't a long life for a landfill. So, we started looking at alternatives and what we were going to do. One of the first things we looked at was the different sites that are possibility of siting the landfill at different locations. It was a kind of a high-level study, but because of the hydrology, geology of a landfill site, and the importance of that, and, you know, nobody wanting it in their backyard, there were limited sites that we identified. I think it was three that were a possibility. But with that, too, just rough estimates for us to eventually move the landfill to the different sites was easily over $10 million at each site to move the landfill. The next thing we looked at was expansion to the north of our current landfill. That's had many challenges, besides having an unwilling landowner. And we also had multiple appraisals on the property. We also looked closer at the property. We went to North Dakota, looked at the files of the old briquet plant, and then we did do some soil borings at the site. That site, as we looked at it, there were some serious environmental concerns. There were some phenyl ponds and contamination. Coal tars were disposed of on the property at the time. There were also multiple landfills previously on the site. Previous surface and underground mining, that area in that property to the north. And in the '60s, it, looking back at the documents, it was actually a low-priority superfund site. So, after all the environmental concerns and the potential liability issues, it was, you know, what else could we look at? What are other alternatives? In 2019, we hired Houston Engineering as our consultant for the landfill. Houston Engineering has developed an option to give us many more years at our current site, and they'll be presenting the major modification and vertical expansion project and task order. So, Sherwin-Warner and Dennis McAlpine will be doing the presentation.
Mr. President, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present the task order, and what we see is a good direction for the landfill and things that we feel are an opportunity to extend the life and increase the capacity. As Mr. Zurov had mentioned, when we first got involved, there was discussions about finding another site, and those are important discussions to have. It takes a long time to find a site and to permit a site, so those are still valid discussions. But in the meantime, we have to do our due diligence to make sure that the investment that's made at this site is used to its fullest potential. And we feel that we have found a way to provide a vertical expansion-- And we feel that we have found a way to provide a vertical expansion, as well as some parallel expansions to the south that both provide increased capacity and lots of value to the, the city of Dickinson. I'm going to turn it over to Dennis McAlpine, who's going to go over the concepts that we're presenting. But the one thing that it will require is that we modify, do a major modification of the existing permit to allow this plant to move forward, and that's, that's the, a big effort. With that, I'll turn it over to Dennis.
Thanks, Sherman. President Dekker, Commissioners, I'm going to go through a brief presentation, a couple slides. It might be easier if we dim the lights to work our way. So as Sherman was saying, we're going to be looking at a major modification. Your, your facility is currently permitted. Your permit does expire in 2025. You do have capacity, although the capacity we're talking about is really a roadmap for the future development of the facility, going to what Mr. Zurov was saying about, you know, the intent to look elsewhere. There's a lot of capacity here, it's just going to require a different take at the permit. This is a great cross-section of the site. This is from north to south. I don't think any of the cells in particular are of importance, but, you know, this is where you are currently permitted. These are your base grades, and then this is where you are currently filled, too. So if you look at it, you do have capacity. This is your permitted final cover, although it sits right in the middle of where you are filling. That's a, that's a limitation and a challenge to the operations when you're trying to manage on both sides of it, when you're working in the middle. We have been working with staff over the past, you know, year and a half, two years, to look at some concepts for expansion. This is a southerly expansion, and then modifications to the cover to get additional capacity at this site. There's a lot of, there's a lot of life at this site. The numbers apologize for them being too small, but I guess the, the takeaway is, is that, you know, none of us will be in this room if we proceed with that horizontal, vertical expansion, because it pushes out roughly, I don't know, 100 years from now. So there's really not much of a need to move from the site. It just needs to be reconfigured on how you're going to develop it. There is a fair amount of site challenges. You know, solid waste management facility, it's, it's more than just a, a whole. There's a lot of, a lot of operations that go on, from, you know, your stormwater, your leachate management, and then just, you know, the hardships with some of the geometry. We could touch base on a couple of them here in the next few slides, so. Currently permitted, this is your facility. If you were to magically place all of the waste to bring it to its, bring it to the end of its life, this is what you are currently permitted for. You have a NERT that is to the west, that is the, the old liner section that Mr. Zurov was talking about. You can no longer place waste, MSW waste here as currently permitted. This is the MSW section. As part of our, as part of our effort, we would work with the state and your staff to develop a liner here so that you could place MSW here. The term in the waste world is called co-mingling. Your waste volumes for demo are roughly like 15% of the MSW. It doesn't make a lot of sense to have this dedicated area and all of this space for such, you know, such a, a small amount of volume. So we'd be looking at combining them together and letting, letting your staff decide, you know, when and where they would place materials. The red blocks represent, you know, another site challenge. Right now, you, you folks are out of cover soil materials within your footprint, within your permitted boundary. Now, the state does not regulate. You can go excavate materials, you just can't place waste in these materials, or waste in these areas. Cell 3B5, which is your next cell, you've actually over excavated beyond what the permitted grades are, which is fine. You haven't placed waste there. As part of this effort, what we would do is get with the state, update that liner section so you wouldn't have to bring materials back. It's valuable airspace, don't, you know, give it back. You have an interesting site in that it has a history as it started with an excavation. Most facilities don't. So you have these hardships with a deep excavation and all of these, you know, slopes that are associated with it. So part of our effort, we would go and, and update all of those plans, really to give the facility the, the understanding that they could develop in a number of areas. Right now, you're limited basically to the center of your facility. So the slopes are those areas that are currently within where waste is being placed, but they're above the current waste grade. We are committed to using existing infrastructure. This is, this is a mature site. You've been here operating for a while, and as part of our effort, we, we do recognize that you spent, you know, spent significant dollars on that, and we'll do our best to identify, you know, opportunities to use as much of that existing infrastructure as possible. And right now, we're looking at this, this slide is the leachate collection system that's in cell 3B4. This is your current cell. You know, there's opportunities to use some of this infrastructure as we develop to the You know, it's all interrelated. Wherever it is you're disposing, whether it's stormwater management, leachate management, you, it's like a bowl of jello. You push on one, something else is going to go. So this, this plan, I guess I want to, you know, leave with a comment on, this is not a plan that's going to sit on a shelf. We will be collaborating with your staff, and in some parts, it'll be a living document. It's going to set that roadmap for the, for the build out of this facility, you know, long after, long after it's closed. So why the permit? Why the modification? As Sherman was saying, that additional capacity, there's a lot there. There's a lot of life at this facility. As we see it, there is no need whatsoever to move at this point. Mitigate the cover soils, the facility is short, but if we work on that southern expansion, there's sufficient materials there. From our concepts, very high level, we've been able to forecast that that will be enough for you to build out, to fully build out this facility. So you do, you do not have a deficit. And then to maximize your return on the site. You have committed a lot to this site, you know, in the many years that you've been here. These are all of the little components that we'll be working on as part of the major modification with the state. It's all encompassing. It's a very comprehensive effort. This, and this is very conceptual, but, you know, to give you an understanding of the value of that added airspace now, you know, just putting in what additional volume you will capture just at your current tipping rate. I mean, these are big numbers, so there's a lot of value here for the city. So our approach, we've provided a task order to the city, and that first step is to initiate that major modification, with the understanding that we would be drafting permit documents to satisfy the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, to get an application on their desk so that you can build in areas where you want to build. Now, it's, you know, I said before, your permit expires in 2025. It's highly likely that you will be looking to expand somewhere by 2025. You do have capacity in the middle of your facility, it's just difficult space to develop if you don't have an understanding what's going on on either side of you. The 3B5 plans, that is your next plan, you know, we will work to make sure that that is permitted through this major modification. So the state will have an awareness and an understanding of it so that when the city chooses to go to construct, there is no authorizations from the state. You're already approved to go. You can proceed with construction as it works with your operation. And then the timetable here, we'd like to do all this by the, by the end of the year, at least make application to the state. I guess with that, if anybody had any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for the gentlemen? The only question I, and it's not towards Sherman or Dennis, Linda or Gary, budget-wise? Impact?
Yes, this kind of a project would be coming out of the oil impact because of the fact it's been budgeted for the last years before I was here for the landfill and the process that they were going through before I came here. So that, that's where that money has always been earmarked at.
So we have the money on hand.
Yep. This, you know, this is a large task order, but, you know, when we, when we started looking at other areas or expansion to the north, I think we originally, you know, I think had 6 million in the, in the expansion. So, you know, at, at this point, this is a real positive, you know, to, to look at, we don't have to move, we don't have to purchase property to the north, and we can do a vertical expansion.
And just finding stuff and getting it permitted, too, is the whole process. So I think we, this is money well spent to utilize this location to, to its fullest, so. Are there any other comments or questions for Houston or staff? Thought I'd look for, well, this is a public hearing first before I look for a motion on the task order. Or no, this is, yes, it is a public hearing, so. Anyone wants to come forward? Gentlemen, if you want to have a seat, if anybody that wants to come forward has any questions on this task order with Houston, and please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns. Also, if you're watching online, 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
So if anyone has any concerns on this task order for the landfill modification and vertical expansion, please come forward, state your name. Anyone watching online, again, the number is 701-456-7006. Anyone have any concerns? Hearing no one online has any concerns or questions, no one in the audience has any questions or concerns, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any further comments or questions on this task order? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on this task order.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move right into our 5:45, which is also a public hearing, Chapter 39 Amendment to our Underground Mining Overlay District. This will be handled by Stark County Planner Josephson.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. This is Steve Josephson. This is, this was an item that came up before you back in November 3rd of 20, of 2020. This came from the Planning and Zoning Commission, had approval from them. This is the creation of an Underground Mining Overlay, Overlay District. This is primarily in the... Having the same problems our esteemed, our esteemed, um, same problems our esteemed senator had. This is primarily in the Lehigh area, just a moment. There we go. In the, in the Lehigh, in the Lehigh area, and the Comprehensive Plan had identified a policy that the county should, should adopt in ordinance, in its zoning ordinance, Underground Mining Overlay District. In those areas where it had been previously identified by the, by, by the State, State Department of Public, the, the Public Service Commission, that there had been undermined, underground, underground mining. If somebody were to come in for a development, for a permit, to do a development, they would submit some sort of documentation that they were not building over, over a, over a, an underground, underground mine, and the purpose of that is to protect them from subsidence. It's to keep people from building on a site and then have it, and then have it, have subsidence fall in sometime in the future. The ordinance that's before you, we based upon one that the city of Beulah has, you know, has, has adopted. We've worked with the Public Works Department to make some changes in lang, in language. I think they had some concerns that this would, this could restrict them from any future development in the landfill area. So we had changed some language that said that unless the developer can demonstrate that no subsidence hazards are, are present on site as outlined later in the ordinance, then it, then it does restrict what kind of, what kind of buildings or expansion can be done, you know, done in the, in the overlay district. And also, part of adopting this ordinance also keeps, keeps the city from being held from liability if somebody does decide to build, to build in this, you know, in, in this area. Both the, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommended approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have at this first reading. And I don't, the city attorney will have to help me out with the ordinance number for this.
I don't think there's one assigned yet. It should be 1720, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this would be ordinance 1720. Any, Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Josephson? Not, we'll go ahead and proceed. Mr. President? No. Mr. Oderman?
Is the, the bit at Coal Mine Area, is that the, that's the area that we're talking about here? Just north of the landfill?
It's in that vicinity, it's that Lehigh area, and if you dim the lights, you can see wherever, see wherever it's outlined in yellow. Those were the areas that were out, that were identified by the, by the, you know, yeah, it is to the north and west, north and west of the landfill.
Well, and, and the reason I ask that is because, I mean, I think this is a fairly well-known area where there, there was underground mining. Are there any other areas around Dickinson, other than the southeast area, that we know of any mining that, that took place?
Not that, not that I'm aware of. The information we have came out of the Comprehensive Plan, and that came from the, you know, from the state, the State Public Service Commission.
Good. Thank you.
It's pretty random, and, but it is a large area out there.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
I think they followed the coal veins as they, to whatever, till they hit the jackpots, so, at that time. Any other questions for Mr. Josephson? Not, we'll go ahead and proceed with the public hearing. If anyone has any concerns with ordinance 1720, and that is our Chapter 39 Amendment to the Underground Mining Overlay District, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns. Again, if you're watching online, the number is 701-456-7006. You may call in and voice your concern. Again, if you have any concerns, please come forward, state your name, and let the commission Anyone have any concerns? Seeing no one has any concerns within the commission chambers, and hearing no one online, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions on 1720?
I just have a question on, since we tabled this before, is there any special way we have to move the motion, or can it just be a standard motion to approve this?
I don't recall if we specifically tabled it. I don't believe that there was any action
Right.
taken on it.
Okay.
So I, I would be fine with just a new motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Is there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It takes us into our 6 o'clock for public comments, not on the agenda. Are there any items that individuals wish to discuss with the commission that were not on the agenda this evening, or something of your concern? You may come forward. Again... Again, if you're watching online, you wish to call in, 701-456-7006. Anyone from the public have any comments? Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public has any comments that weren't on the agenda, or issues they wish to discuss with the commission, I'll close the public hearing. Take care of everything. We go back to engineering. City Engineer Marshak waiting patiently for, we'll move into this bid approval.
President Decker, commissioners, contained in your packet is items for the 2021 Annual Sidewalk Program Acceptance of Bid. Within your packet, you'll find the bid from Wind Construction, a copy of the notice of award that would be given if you approve this tonight, and an example of the spreadsheet that we share with our citizens when they request to move forward with the sidewalk program as it's a voluntary program. These bids were open May 26, 2021. Wind Construction was the only bidder having the bid amount of $227,691. The itemized bid amounts changed very little from 2020 with an increase of about 4%. This project is the mechanism which the city offers to encourage property owners to make improvements to sidewalks, curb and gutter, and driveways, which are within the street right of way through a voluntary special improvement district. Its city engineering department recommends approval. Do you have any questions for me on this item?
Thank you, Mrs. Marshak. Any questions for Mrs. Marshak on this bid approval? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion on the bid approval.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item up, we have a wastewater pumping station service agreement, and that'll be handled by interim utilities manager, Mr. Zaspal. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioner. Yes, I would like to have the service contract for two waste stations, or two, or two service contracts for wastewater treatment plant, and then also our collection system. On this contract helps us service the lift stations, service our pumps, and also training and maintenance part. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Zaspal. Any questions for Mr. Zaspal on this service agreement? This is our annual renewal.
It is, yes.
Do we see a cost increase from last year? I guess I'm trying to look for your numbers.
Yeah, I was going to say, any significant changes?
It was about the same. The wastewater treatment plant is $600. That's for two lift stations and four pumps. And it's $4,800 for 16 lift stations and 34 pumps at the collection, the utility side.
Separate motions. Mrs. Winkell?
Commissioner Oderman, yes, you're expending due to two different amounts for two various services. I would recommend that.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Oderman, your motion on...
I would move to approve the lift station service maintenance contract.
Right. We have a motion to approve the lift service station, service agreement by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a separate for the wastewater pumping station.
I'd move to approve the wastewater pumping station service agreement.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve the wastewater service agreement, second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioner.
That takes care. We have nothing in planning, building code enforcement. Move on to item 10. Commissioners, do you have any items you wish to bring to staff's attention or the public's attention?
Mr. President?
Mr. Oderman?
I think it was Mrs. O'Brien at that last commission meeting brought up, and I don't know if this is even worth giving any additional time to or attention to, but we can, and maybe it's my fault for spending time on social media, but we continue to have individuals out of the community, almost like in an agent provocateur type way, putting these videos on social media saying that we have individuals being dropped off in our community, and going into great detail describing, you know, these individuals and, and really doing it in a way that kind of sells that this is the truth. And I, I just, I don't know how we get, you know, more, more, maybe aggressive in our communication that this isn't happening. Because I, this is a fear that is out there. I think it's a misplaced fear, but we have people that are really trying to stir people up.
I don't, I don't think you ever...
No.
You ever get rid of the conspiracy. I, I'm in contact, and I'm sure Mr. Whittingham is too, with the airport. We're not getting, the big white planes are not dropping off individuals. They're private planes. They are there for other business.
And, and that's why I say I hate to bring this up, but it's just, it's, it's, it is something that is out there. I don't know if Sheriff Lee or somebody else can try to put these people's fears to rest, but this is not happening, and it's not something that would happen without, without us knowing it. I, I think that's something that is really important for people to know is that this would not be happening without the city or the county knowing that this was taking place. And so if you hear it from anybody that isn't a, an authority in the city or the county, or even the sheriff's department, I would just really encourage people to consider the source and ignore it if it doesn't come from somebody in, in a position of authority in that way. And that might be falling on deaf ears, but I just, I think it's, I continue to see it, and it's, it's really frustrating to me because I know that our city staff, our police department, and, and our sheriff's department is doing everything that they can to keep us safe and make sure that things like this don't happen. I know Mr. Whittingham is on the lookout for things like this, as are people at, at the county. So I just saw it again, so I thought I would bring it up and address that, hey, this is not taking place. So.
We, we're keeping a pulse on it, and all I can say is there's certain people that just need to draw attention to themselves. So they are making what they need to, keep their channels active.
It's unfortunate.
Yes. So we're, we're much in the situation.
President, I'll make a, a comment from a, from a city operational standard. I am aware of some of the controversy. There's been some phone calls to the city. I, I don't find any proof from what I've researched on any, what would be so-called, in the past would be illegal immigration, migrant refugees, whatever the federal government decides to call them, undocumented travelers, journeyers. If they are in the, if they do end up in the city of Dickinson, which I have not seen, or there's one or two people that show up that are, that are considered illegal immigrants from the, from some other country, if they're breaking the law, or if they're not supposed to be here, then the city of Dickinson will enforce our laws. It'll make sure that the people are safe. I've seen none of the conspiracies, like personally, but I've fielded quite a few phone calls. There is an opportunity to help people if they have anxiety, or if they have something that considered stressful mentally. And I will point them in that direction, but I'll also always try to answer their questions as kind as possible and get them the help needed. And if they do have a legitimate complaint, then we will, you know, send out our police force to ensure they're being taken care of. And that's, I think that's how I would address it and continue to address it. And if the public wishes to contact the city of Dickinson, we'll always be ready to respond.
I, I just think it's unfortunate because you have much better things to do with your time than field those phone calls.
Part of doing business here.
Yeah.
Part of this.
I guess.
Part of this job. So welcome to the club.
I'll just make a statement, Mr. President and Commissioners, that is part of our first portion of our city's mission.
Right.
Which is to celebrate small town values. Sometimes those small town values, people, people talk and, and others listen, and, and that's okay. At least we can respond and address it the best we can by reassuring them that, that we are not receiving any refugees from the federal government in the city of Dickinson. If they do find a camp somewhere else, please let us know. I, I don't think it's true.
Anything else, Commissioners? Look for a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second.
We are adjourned.